Okay, this is a semi-special Lance versus Rick thing where I have to make a campaign statement. I've been on the Studio City Neighborhood Council for two years. Now it's time we're having elections again and I need to make it an election statement slash video. And here it is. I've done a reasonably okay job over the past two years on the Studio City Neighborhood Council. Neighborhood councils were started a couple of decades ago. The San Fernando Valley, a big northern chunk of LA was threatening to secede from LA. And so the city decided to increase representation across the entire city by creating 99 separate neighborhood councils covering all areas of the city. And I'm on the Studio City Neighborhood Council. I've been treasurer for two years, which is a pain in the ass job. Sometimes I've done a decent job, sometimes I've dawdled about getting checks issued. You know, in the business world, you know, payment is usually net 30, where you present an invoice and you expect payment within 30 days. I've always been within 30, but sometimes people on the council want payment to go out faster. And sometimes I've taken 10 days to get a check request in. So that's so to that extent, I've, you know, I haven't been as quick as I could be. I'll try to improve if I continue, if I get reelected and I continue as treasurer. It's not a fun job, but I'm okay with doing it and I've learned how to do it. Some of the questions asked other candidates include, are you open to different opinions? And, you know, among the council members and among the people you represent. And the answer is obviously yes. You know, my best friends are you guys. You know, Lance is wildly conservative and I'm pretty liberal. I'm probably, you know, you know, in the 30th percentile on the liberal conservative spectrum, that one third of people are more liberal than I am. But I tolerate conservative opinions. I appreciate them and like, I've been known to change my mind if good enough arguments are made to the conservative side. One of the guys I like most on the council is super Trumpy, Richard Adams. I find him knowledgeable, reasonable, funny. And, you know, we voted, you know, he's Republican and I'm not. You know, what about the issues facing Studio City? Well, I'm pro-business. All four of my grandpas and step grandpas were small businessmen. My dad, my stepdad, my stepmom, all small business people. You know, Studio City is a lucky community because COVID and internet commerce have kicked the shit out of retail brick and mortar businesses across the nation and across LA. But Studio City still has, you know, a better than average number of businesses that are hanging in there. And I consider it part of my job to make Studio City continue to be a good place to do business. Other, like the main issue probably that and the most intractable issue facing Studio City and the rest of LA is homelessness. And do I have any genius ideas about what to do about homelessness? Not so much, not, I mean, I'm as at a loss as most people in LA. LA is America's capital for homeless people. There are some policies in the state of California. There are some business policies on the part of rehab places that will pay for your plane ticket to come out to LA and get rehabbed and then maybe you won't pay for your way back. You know, LA is a great place to live. You know, if I were going to be homeless, I'd rather be homeless in LA than in Detroit. So we attract a lot of homeless. And LA is trying to address the problems. California as a state needs to address problems with, you know, where you can't, there are issues that you can't commit people for longer than 72 hours on a 5150 order for examination for mental illness. You know, we've tried to build little houses, eight by eight, eight foot by eight foot houses for the homeless across LA that have turned out to be way more expensive than you'd want them to be in the tens of thousands of dollars per little home. You know, we're trying, we're aware of the problem. And I gotta say that I have no, you know, extra special expertise in what to do about it beyond being aware of it. Lance, if you want to, you know, say anything.
Well, my solution to the homeless problem, I could solve it very easily.
This is my arguing adversary Lance. We've been doing a show where we yell at each other for more than four years.
Yeah, I know that in parts of Los Angeles, there are no homeless people because that particular area is rigidly enforcing their laws. And so the homeless people will set up right next to the border or on one side of the street. So if I was you, Rick, I would make sure that your city becomes one of the ones that doesn't tolerate homelessness.
That's the NIMBY solution, not in my backyard, which is, I mean, it doesn't solve homelessness. It just, homeless is out of your little, and you know, the Studio City Neighborhood Council doesn't have the power to do it, even if we wanted to do that. We don't have the power to do that. And we're part of Metro LA, so and we can't, you know, the cities you're talking about, like Beverly Hills is not part of the city of LA. The city of LA has to, you know, we're subject to their laws and policies.
All right, well, let me tell you how I would solve the homeless problem. Okay, and you don't have to argue with me, I'll just tell you.
Okay.
The first is we have to shut the border down because we're getting hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people pouring in. And they are, if they're not ending up on the street, they're taking up all the low income housing. The second thing we have to do is the state has to loosen up any regulations that are making it hard for developers to build low income housing. So in other words, there was a time in California where you could be a drug addict or an alcoholic or just lose your job, but still be able to find a cheap apartment or a cheap house on the outskirts of the urban centers. So we've stopped doing that. California has a new construction of low income housing is ground to a halt because of excessive regulations. But as far as the individuals that are homeless, I would say that we need to make it, the governor has already proven that he can bend any law he wants.
All right, we can't go too deep because this is supposed to be.
Rick, I want it, you can cut this out if you want to, but.
No, no, but like, you gotta let me respond to some of this stuff.
Let me just finish. All right, okay, go ahead, respond.
All right, so I don't think that the people coming over the border are the major factor in LA's homelessness problem.
Okay, I'm getting to that then, Rick. Let me, let me just finish, okay? Because I have to address several aspects of the problem or it doesn't make sense. The, what we need to do is we need to make it illegal to sleep on the street. And if people are in violation of that law of making it, and they are found to be sleeping on the street, we need to take them to cheap shelters on the outskirts of town where they will have to remain as wards of the state until they clean up their addictions. If they violate those, the orders, if they go back to drugs or alcohol, if they refuse to cooperate, or then we should put them in jail for vagrants.
America is already has the most highest incarceration rate.
Yeah, I know, but what I'm saying is we do two things. We isolate the homeless population. We find out which ones are insane and those would get mental health treatment.
Where are you going to get the resources for all this? The enforcement, the evaluation?
I'll tell you something, Rick. We're spending vast amounts of money in bribery and graft in this state since the Democrats took over. One of the reasons.
We're not doing the Lance versus Rick show, we're doing, I'm trying to keep.
Well, I'm answering you, the state has the money.
Like, no, we gotta move on from this because we got others.
All right, all right, the money, the money that we're spending on the bullet train is amounting to hundreds of billions of dollars. That money could be used. So we're spending money on a train from Fresno to Sacramento that's costing many, many billions of dollars. I suggest we use that to build very cheap mental health facilities and shelters. Go ahead, Rick.
All right, I think a lot of what you're saying is impractical and just not doable given the current structure of things. And wouldn't work for a number of reasons. The homeless people, for one thing, most homeless people are not crazy. Most homeless people do not have substance abuse problems. A significant proportion do and a significant proportion are, do have some degree of mental illness. But most people don't and they have some degree of autonomy and have found themselves homeless often through bad luck, losing jobs.
If people are found to be fit and healthy, then they should enjoy being in a shelter, a cheap facility where we can help them get their lives back together. That's fine by me, but you can't sleep on the street.
You're talking tens of thousands of people.
Yeah, we have tens of thousands of people in army barracks all over the state.
Yeah, all right, we need to move on from this. I do agree that the code book for building in California has like tripled in thickness while in the, you know, 30 years I've lived in California. And most of it for good reasons. You know, earthquake safe construction is a big deal. And, you know, some of the, some of the code is, you know, building with less impact on the environment. And part of the housing problem is the success of California where people want to live here. You know, where Silicon Valley is so successful that they have their own housing crisis because so many people have moved there to be successful that there's a huge housing shortage. And I'd say that that's to some extent, you know, LA's problem that.
A lot of the, a lot of the problem with these limitations are artificial problems. There are fanatical environmentalists that have wormed their way into positions of power who are deliberately trying to keep housing from developing in California. They don't want to develop California, they're anti-developal.
That's not my policy.
Good.
That my, I'm in favor of reasonable development. And I've done like various building projects and I know, you know, what you go through to get a building project okayed in the city of Los Angeles.
Would you, would you try to make that easier for people?
Yeah. And but it's tricky because like I've served on the Government Affairs Committee for two and a half years, even before I was on the council. And, you know, in serving on that committee, we've looked at, you know, various, you know, on policies that we, you know, either recommend or recommend against with regard to developers and what they're subject to. And yeah, I'm in favor of what key, what development that, you know, helps solve the homeless problem. But more importantly, because that's only part of the homeless problem, keeps Studio City a, an attractive, livable community.
The director, the director has asked, the director has asked a question about infrastructure.
Directors ask how I stand on infra, I'm in favor of huge infrastructure spending bills, including Biden's $1.9 billion. I mean, because we haven't spent money on infrastructure in a decade. The last big infrastructure plan passed under Obama, I don't know how many years ago. And our infrastructure was, within the last week, was rated nationally at a C minus, which is surprisingly high considering how much we haven't spent on it. You know, parking meters, the city of LA is pretty broke. I don't like sneaky ways of LA getting money. You know, tricking people to, you know, hitting people with ridiculous fees for a trap, for minor traffic infractions. You know, traffic tickets and parking tickets shouldn't be to make to, shouldn't, the main purpose should not be to get revenue for the city of LA that it's not getting from other sources. Traffic enforcement and parking enforcement are designed to make parking available and driving safer. And policies that turn those into revenue generating deals are, I don't approve of those.
Are you, would you see yourself in a position where you could actually work against those corrupt policies?
Well, mostly on the council, we can send recommendations to the city to, we have close relationships with our various city council people. You know, the people who actually run the city and we send recommendations to them.
Would you be willing to send a recommendation that they lower the cost of these fines for minor violations of traffic? You know, people get reamed for the tiniest little things. Would you commit to sending a letter recommending that we roll those things back, these fines?
Yeah, I could do that, though, I mean, in places like Sweden, how much you get fined depends on how much money you make. You'd hate that, right?
Yes.
Like, if a guy who makes $30 million a year gets a speeding ticket in Sweden, he might get fined $30,000 because his income's so high. You know, you wouldn't, I don't think you'd approve of a progressive.
Surely that's not the only solution, Rick. I mean, surely you could look around at the cost of a parking violation in your area and see if they're too high, see if you could lower some of those costs.
Yeah, I could do that.
All right.
And it's something like, at the next meeting of Government Affairs.
And how, what are you doing to show that you're pro-business in your area? In Studio City, what are you doing?
One thing that the council does is, you know, we vote on liquor licenses. And, you know, we don't have the power to deny a liquor license, but our recommendation for or against carries weight. And I've never voted against a liquor license because all the proposals we've received have been reasonable. Sometimes we'll, you know, add caveats that, you know, that, you know, that if a bar is close to a residential area, you're going to need operating hours and, you know, noise abatement that are consistent with people living near the bar. But it's, the bars in Studio City are not the bars on Sunset Boulevard, you know, where you need to rock out until two minutes of 2:00 AM, five nights.
If you get elected again, what is your policy about restricting businesses because of the virus?
I'm okay with businesses being open within reason. And those reasons, now, right, we've moved from purple, the most dire level of COVID, to red, now we're in orange, which is, I think, the second to, it's the second best. We're positivity within the city of LA, within LA County is down to 1.4%. Anything under five is you're doing well, so we're doing really well. LA County, the number of case, new COVID cases per day is three to 700 a day in a county that has about eight million people. So we're doing well. So the rest of the country is experiencing a fourth wave of COVID. It's a pretty gentle wave compared to the third wave, which was brutal. But if California and LA County can stay away from being hit hard by the fourth wave, I'm okay with everything opening up, but with people remaining masked.
Do you want people masked as they walk down the street or when they go into a business?
For the next little while, I'd want people masked whenever they're out in public with certain exceptions that you've brought up. Like if you're at the beach and the beach is not like St. Petersburg for spring break, if it's, if there's a lot of space among people. I'm okay with masks off on the beach, at parks. If you're walking down like Ventura Boulevard, I'd prefer people remain masked for the next little while. Is it going to be a month? Is it going to be six weeks, two more months? You know, my wife and I went out to dinner on the sidewalk because that's how you eat in LA now. And, you know, like, I don't want somebody walking past me maskless. You know, it's not the worst thing in the world because, you know, it takes three seconds for somebody to walk past you without a mask. But I prefer on busy streets, people remain masked.
Let me ask you a question, Director, let me ask this question. So as a leader of the community, what would be something that you really want to do if you had the power to do it? What dream reform or act would you, would you like to do?
If I could do anything within reason.
Anything for your community of Studio City, what do you think would improve Studio City for the people?
My dream project would be turning vacant storefronts into business incubators. Where, you know, like every other stretch of Ventura Boulevard, we've lost a lot of businesses, we lost The Gap, we lost Banana Republic, we lost Umami Burger. We've lost dozens of businesses in a, you know, two mile stretch of Ventura. And these places, we lost Pier One. These big old retail spaces can stay vacant for years. I would like to work out some kind of deal where, you know, if you're some kind of startup company, we make those spaces available to you, we work out some deal with, you know, the landlords. Where, you know, short-term leases, six months, nine months, at reduced rates for businesses that would storefronts, retail spaces that would otherwise be vacant, where these businesses can come in and set up workspaces. And try to, you know, and Studio City can be a place, you know, like other parts of the country where people, you know, where people know to go to, it's a friendly place to try to start a business.
Why do you think the landlords?
In Studio City is the Radford Studio Lot. It's a huge, you know, it's a, some of the, your favorite shows are made, you know, a mile from my house on this big lot. And that's great, it, you know, it's a huge creative community right in the center of Studio City. But what would happen if we ever lost that? That would just crush, I don't think, we're not in danger of losing it. It's been in business for 100 years almost. But, you know, stuff can happen. CBS Television City on Fairfax changed hands. The Tonight Show studio, NBC, I think, sold off that whole studio in Burbank. And it's now, you know, under different management and probably producing less prestigious stuff. You know, stuff can happen and I'd like Studio City to have a wider business footprint.
Well, let me ask you the obvious question. If there are these large empty storefronts, why isn't the owner, the landlord, thinking of these things? And how would your approach allow these storefronts to be filled that he hasn't already thought of? What would you do that he hasn't thought of already? Because obviously the landlord doesn't want these storefronts empty either.
I don't know, I haven't talked to the landlord. But, you know, these places end up staying, you know, The Gap has been out of there for, I don't know, probably close to four years. And, you know, the only time it's occupied now is when it becomes a Halloween store. So at least I know they're willing to make a two-month deal leading up to Halloween. So I would assume that landlords might be willing to, you know, amenable to other kinds of deals. You know, pop up restaurants. We have a very vibrant, you know, restaurant, set of restaurants in Studio City. And when people come to go to restaurants and bars, they often come to do, that can support other kinds of shopping. And again, we want to keep Studio City, you know, a destination that, you know, we're. And again, we want to keep Studio City, you know, a destination that, that, you know, we're, we're nicely located, we're a short trip from, you know, we're right at the southern border of the San Fernando Valley, which means we're easily accessible from the west side, from, you know, from, you know, the, from Hollywood, accessible from Burbank. You know, we're, and I will continue working to, the business will continue to change and will get more and more challenging for brick and mortar. And I'll keep working to make Studio City a place where people want to kid, come to live and work and can support both brick and mortar businesses and, I hope, you know, businesses that are formed here, even though they're mostly online. Or they're, you know, they're, they're tech businesses supporting the entertainment industry. We're looking, you know, over the next twenty years, we're looking at a dispersal of the entertainment industry, right, you know? Fifty years ago, sixty years ago, the entertainment business moved from New York to LA. Now, it's inconceivable that, that, that the entertainment industry would be anywhere but LA, but it wasn't always that way. And in the future, it's gonna further disperse. It's, you know, it'll move north to Vancouver, it'll move just all over the world as people telecommute, as different projects, you know, when you look at, at a superhero movie, you know, twelve thousand people work on a superhero movie and the work on that movie is farmed out to nations all over the world. You know, the, the CG work, you know, South Korea, China, India, you know, and that's gonna continue. And we have to change with the times to make sure that that businesses of that type can continue to feel welcome and supported in Studio City. I guess that's it. Lance, thanks for helping out. JD, thank you.
Maybe we can use some of those, maybe we can use some of those abandoned storefronts to lower the cost of creating movies by giving the studios more facilities so they won't go overseas.
Well, I mean, the, the problem is, is, is not the cost of facilities, it's the cost of labor. Where.
I'm just saying, there are a lot of animators and CG technicians and, and computer artists. And we have a hard time getting those people jobs because they have to compete with cheaper people in Asia.
That's true, and I'd like to see what we could do to make, you know.
If you could, if you could, if you could guarantee, for example, free rent, you, you wouldn't have to, if you could include rent for low-income housing, you could give a perk to, to people working in the, in the technical fields and, and thereby keep more business in LA by having more workers find Studio City attractive.
That would take subsidies, and you're a conservative, and you're, you, would you be okay with government subsidies to support these kind of efforts?
Well, if, if you could open up areas of the, of your community that are laying dormant right now and if, you know, one of the great things that Trump did is he, he gave out, at the beginning of the pandemic, he gave everybody money in their pocket with loans. And at the time, I thought, oh, great, more welfare. Well, I got one of those loans, a small business loan, and I found out, heck's sakes, I've got to pay it all back. But the difference is, because it's the US government, it's a low interest rate. So I'm, I'm all in favor of low-interest loans and housing and, and things, because nobody loses money. The government gets paid back with low interest and, and and the person that needs the, the, the help gets the help they need.
All right, that's the second thing I'll bring up at the next Government Affairs Committee meeting. Thank you, Lance.
All right, see you.
Thanks to anybody who's, you know, sat through this whole thing. You know, if you liked some of what you heard, you can vote for me. You have to request a ballot. Even if you don't live in Studio City, you can still request a ballot for your own neighborhood's election. You go to the Neighborhood Council Election Portal and you fill out an application and they will send you a ballot. But you have to do it soon because you have to get your ballot in by, I think, May eleventh. So anyway, thank you for listening, appreciate it. Good night.